All right, we're up. The call is meeting Rockport Select Board to Order for Monday, January 23rd. The normal caution here, if you have to take a call on your cellphone, please step outside or just ignore the call, turn it off and mute your phones. Moving on, we have no public hearing this evening. So our next item of agenda is approval of minutes of past meetings. We have two sets here before us, Thursday, December 8th, which we received actually at our last meeting, but they were not included in the electronic packet, so some people didn't have an opportunity to review them. So we now have Thursday, December 8th, minutes. Do I have a motion to accept?
Move to approve, accept minutes of December 8th.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Do we have any comments, errors, omissions, corrections and the like?
Apparently not.
Apparently not. Hearing none. I will call for the vote. All in favor of accepting? And that passes. Our next item...
Brendan, I don't believe was attending that meeting.
Oh, I wasn't there.
Oh, you're right.
So he needs abstaining.
So we have four in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. You're right. Good catch. The next item is the approval of the minutes of our January 9th meeting, which we received and is before us. Do I have a motion to accept?
It's removed.
Does anyone want to second? Thank you. It's moved and seconded. Discussion.
Page four, bottom of the page. Some guy named Geoff. Rather than the pronoun, I think "it" is a bad idea. If we could just say revocable license is a bad idea.
So in place of the "it," it's revocable license?
Please.
Or that, it?
That, yeah. A revocable license is a bad idea. The whole darn thing.
All right. Any others?
I do have one and I'm trying to find it.
If it's spelling, it might have been corrected already.
No, it wasn't spelling. If somebody else has one, go ahead.
Anybody else have one? Nope.
Okay. Somewhere in here, it said that "I favored the One Lime Rock site."
They didn't say that and I put it in yellow.
And I did not say that. I can't find it. I don't...
I can find it.
Well, what I said was, at the time of the discussion, that I felt that with a short timeframe, that the One Lime Rock site was probably the best option to get something on the ballot in June. So I just want to make that correction and restate that I'm totally on board with the process that we...
Top of page nine, he recommended the One Lime Rock site.
Right.
Oh, yep.
Yeah.
How do you think it should be worded then?
Time, timeframe recommends the One Lime Rock site.
With, with a short timeframe, the One Lime Rock site seems to make more sense. I think that's what I said. If anybody else disagrees, then we can duke it out, I suppose, but...
Nope.
And I want to make it clear that I'm on board with the process that we adopted to look at both sites. So that's the main reason for making the correction.
Okay. Any other? With the amendments, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Three, four, five. All right. Very well.
Didn't sound good to me.
Some announcements. First off, our next regular Select Board meeting will be Monday, February 13th, and we will have another Select Board meeting on Monday, February 27th, both at 7:00 PM and here. Some special workshops that we have lined up. First of all, Monday, January 30th, this is for a special library workshop where the purpose is for reviewing programming needs and discussing fundraising opportunities with the Library, Library Committee and Capital Campaign Committee. We also have one scheduled for Wednesday, February 1st, 7:00 PM right here. Consider physical aspects of the library with architects, engineers, contractors, et cetera. The next one will be Tuesday, February 7th, 7:00 PM, here at the Rockport Opera House. We will be meeting with Jane LaFleur and some planners to provide insights to living in walkable communities. And then we have one on Thursday, February 9th, 7:00 PM here, sort of as a wrap-up or other issues, if we, other items that we need to discuss at that point. We'll probably figure that out on the 7th. Jeff, you said you needed something.
I'm going to steal, yeah. Question about the, all the people named, et cetera. Who is lining those people up? Is that Brendan and I or is that you as chair or is that all of us with suggestions? Which, who's ever in charge of lining those people up? I'd love to have suggestions from everybody.
I would think that it would be left to you, particularly for the architects, engineers, contractors, et cetera, because you had a list of possibles to contact.
Started our list, but, yeah.
Yeah. Other ideas or thoughts on that one?
Certainly, I think we should start with it because you had contacted some people and got some, at least tentative commitments. If you would like me to call some people, I'm happy to do that, but I think...
Yeah, and I had my one person that I was going to call. I haven't yet, but I actually thought about it today. Remembered that I forgot.
Okay. Would you...
Been using that a lot.
Work with, work on that with Jeff to make sure we're not cross-purposing?
Sure.
Okay.
We'll get this done, Jeff. Could I say something similar, but on a different note?
Well, let's, let's finish up.
Well, it's right on top of this stuff. So very brief statement. I ran across a person at the Redemption Center. I explained this process that we were going through with her. She was extremely happy to hear that we were doing this process. And I'm just curious, we talk often about how it's difficult for our citizens to understand that we're doing this great process and we have these great dates. I just thought it would be a good time to say, is there more we can do before we actually get started on the meat of this to better inform our citizenry that we're doing these things and please just be aware? Just throwing it out there, we can move on. I just, it's such a good, we did good. We done good. How can we inform people that we're working on it? We done good. We're having meetings. Please come.
Let's come back to that after we finish Jeff's point. My understanding is you had already contacted Jane LaFleur?
Correct. She's free for that.
And she's free for that night. I was at the Midcoast Economic Development District meeting last Thursday. Apparently, the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission has a new executive director, Ann Krieg. I think, I think that's the way we pronounce it. I mentioned it to Jamie and Rick, and I think Jamie was going to reach out to her.
Yeah, they were supposed to be meeting tomorrow, actually, but because of the weather, that meeting has been canceled.
Okay.
But I'm sure he will meet, reach out to her. There was a planners' meeting that, in Augusta, and that's been canceled for tomorrow. He was also going to look and speak to some other planners and see if there was any, any other interest in getting somebody else, that organization, to come in.
Okay. And then I think we leave with, at least it's for the planners, not Jane, but the planner, with Rick and Jamie.
Yeah.
Okay? Are we good at that point? Now, what else?
Basically, you're going to be coordinating the contractors and engineers. If you need help, you'll reach out to...
Yeah.
To myself or Owen.
And you have me as much as...
Okay.
Well, I will, I will, I'll be point person for both of those meetings and I'll get help where I need it. And you guys will send in more suggestions if possible.
In the interest of trying to give the public a heads-up about who these people are, what's, what's the best tool and technique for that?
Like bios or something or?
I'm actually not interested, I'm, I'm not at all concerned if these are people who have never had any public discourse with the Rockport community in the past. I'm more interested in just being able to fully establish that we are talking to people that we believe don't have bias and to give the public an opportunity to get squeaky back at me if they disagree with that assessment. Is there any, is there anything we can do? I mean, you know, it's a condensed timeframe.
That's the, that's the problem.
We don't know who's coming. I mean...
Yeah.
If the, you know, if the answer is no, then the answer is no, but I'm confident we're doing what we can.
Until we identify them, how can we put that out?
Well, the first, I mean, the, the meeting that's next Monday is, I think that everybody knows those folks. It's Ben, it's the Library Committee, it's the Trouton and Joan, if they're both, I don't know if they're both coming or not.
Jones, I don't think Joan is in town. I think it's only Charlton.
It could be as simple as just trying to get, as we get these names, try and get a draft agenda for that meeting.
Well, I was just going to say, if, if we could, the next one is Wednesday. If we could maybe have a goal by the end of this week to have the names, we could at least put them up on the town website and send out a press release or something like that.
Yeah, a press release, if we send out another press release, we could, you know, enlist those, at least list those dates and have the conversation. The papers that have interest will publish it.
I noticed there was an article, just popped up today on the library process from, from our last meeting on, I think it was Village Soup.
I'm sure Ben will, I'm sure we'll get some, something on the library website if we get it to him in time.
Yeah. To go to Owen's point though, it's unfortunate we didn't think about it last week when we were talking, because this would have been that opportunity to send out the postcards. Remember, we were going to send out postcards to everybody announcing the listening tour, but because we canceled it, we sort of forgot that we could have used that as a means of communication to let them all know what we're doing. Does this still fit that kind of criteria or do we need to give more information about the process that we're going through? And how do you fit that on a postcard along with the dates?
Well, I think the problem with the postcards is that, that works well if you have a definite schedule and we sort of don't. I mean, because we, I mean, we do, but for example, that Thursday, February 9th meeting, we don't really know what we're going to be talking about at that meeting.
I know.
So it's a little hard to send something out and to go to that expense.
Well, let's, let's do this. I, I think the press releases, I think we should do what we ought to be doing anyway, but make sure it happens this time around. And that is to say, that is to say, press releases, that is to say, trying to get editorial coverage on it, because the process is important. The other thing is, the process is very, very important. Whether we have 20 people here or 75 people here is not as important as the live stream is, is equally as important, but the live stream, talk, you know, people who have seen it, talking to other people, that's all, you know, equally or more important and gets out further. So because, because we are not entertaining verbalized input from the, from people in, in the audience, we certainly will, will have a mechanism for people to say, could you please ask these experts about X, Y, or Z? A, you know, a question which will, in their minds, hopefully support something that they want to support, but that process will be, will be smoother and will be something that people could even do remotely. But they could, people can check back on it, because there's really, there's, there's so much research that we've already done that there's not going to be a whole lot of new stuff. We just want to consider honestly all the, you know, the stuff to...
Okay. Keep in mind, if we're going to do any press release, it's got to be going out now.
Tomorrow.
Stacy has not been given a heads-up by us to tell them to hold the press, because normally you, both the Free Press and the Camden Herald are going to press tomorrow morning.
The online versions though, they, we can get...
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I think the online, we're going to have to rely on that.
We'll hit the, we'll hit what we can hit.
Maybe our print people, the press, are listening to this or are watching it, that get the idea that we've got these for meetings and if you can get it into print, because there are a lot of people that still, I mean, we heard that back in November, that there are a lot of people that still rely on the print media to get their information.
I mean, it's, it goes beyond that. I talked to people before our last meeting who were going to the town's website, to the calendar, to the correct day, but our minutes, I mean, but our agenda was not posted day, you know, until day of. So there's, there's a lot of room to get, to get better.
Part of that is our, our issue here in that the schedule that we typically are on, that we don't approve the agenda until the Wednesday before the meeting. It then takes the town office a day or so to be able to put it all together with the packet, the electronic version, and get it posted. Normally, it's up there by noon on Friday.
By noon on Friday.
I've, I've seen it, because I get an email announcing that it's there.
At this point, we could put something up on the town, or we could have somebody put something up on the town website tomorrow that says, we have meetings on this date, this date, this date, this date. And the first one, the agenda is, because we know what's going to be the first one. We know who's going to be there for the first one. And then just a statement saying, check back for more details on the agenda of subsequent meetings.
Yeah.
We have all that information.
I need to get the agenda done. Are we done with the announcements of our workshop?
Are you feeling...
It's almost as long as Rick's report.
My report's going to be very short.
Okay.
I thought yours was blank.
Couple of announcements. All the meetings for our committees and our workshops and us are on the town website. Go ahead and visit that. Town offices will be closed Monday, February 20th. I know that's a way out in the future, but, but that's in recognition of the President's Day holiday. And something that hasn't, didn't go on to this, the published agenda, is that the Budget Committee is meeting this Thursday, 7:00 PM at the town office, to review the Provider Agency applications in preparation for an allocation to be on the town meeting warrant. I wanted to make sure people were aware of that. Committee openings are all found on the town website. Do we have any agenda changes for this evening? Anyone? Hearing none? Public comment. Public comment will be directed at, please will be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome prior to each agenda item. Further comment will be granted only by permission from the Board. All public comment should be brief and to the point. Do we have anyone wishing to make public comment tonight? Then let's move on to the town manager update. And in our current iterations here, town manager gives his full report on the first meeting in the month and the Select Board does its liaison reports on the second. But if Rick has any pressing issues that we absolutely need to be made aware of, this is his time to speak.
Okay, then I don't... Two, two things that probably you should know about if you don't already. One is that the school board officially voted to, to move their ballot issue up until the June meeting. We talked about that, that they may be doing that. They took that vote and that's, that's all set. And also, Megan and I have been grinding away at the budget numbers, the budgets, and the good news is that it's not quite as bad as we originally predicted. We did some, some massaging, quite a bit of massaging and got it, so that we, we basically had to go through and cut the budget by about $500,000 to make the LD1 number. That's still a lot, but it's a lot better than a million. So we're, we're narrowing down on what the final budget numbers are going to look like. And, you know, there's going to be some tough decisions to, to make, but we'll, we're getting there, so. And that's all I have.
Any questions to town manager on this?
How about if we report that we're now accepting credit cards?
Oh, yes, yes. Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
It's going well.
And you didn't think that was important?
Yeah.
It is very important. People are excited.
Oh, good.
That just made my day.
And it's a minimum of $1 for each transaction or 2.5% charged to the resident.
Oh. Oh, that's the fee.
That's the fee.
Okay.
I'll go with the $1 for my property tax.
It's going to be more than that.
Yeah.
You don't get to pick.
Quick side note, super quick, just so you know, the, the dates that you have for school break...
Yeah, I was going to point that out.
Are here, aren't the proper dates.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh. Okay.
Because it always includes the President's Day holiday.
Well, I know, it did. Okay.
Thank you, Linda.
All right. Very good. Makes things some easier. Okay. Moving ahead, unfinished business. We have none this evening, so let's move to new business. First item is to acknowledge gifts to the town. We have a couple of substantial gifts from the Cascade Foundation. The first is $20,000 that they have made to the town for the Newtown Office vestibule. It's a beautiful entrance and it's heated, at least in the winter. Don't know about air conditioning in the summer.
Yeah, there is, there's AC also, because that would be a problem. There's a vent system and there's AC, so it allows it to stabilize the temperatures.
Mm-hmm. And the second one is this Cascade Foundation has made a donation of $30,000 to purchase new fire jackets, pants and boots for the fire department. Boy, I tell you, this is really good to hear that...
Especially in a tough budget year.
Yeah, but, you know, particularly for the fire department, that they're getting new turnout gear and it's really, it's really important for them to be properly clothed when they go into these situations.
And that gives them, basically it gives them, as you remember, they already gave us a donation for one set. This gives them a, everybody a second set, so that if they... If one set is get, if they go into a building and it gets dirty, it has to get laundered before it can get used again, has to get dry cleaned. So it, it sets them up with another set in case of emergency, so they've got a backup set of turnout gear.
Good.
Now, in, in the past, the generosity of the Cascade Foundation has enabled the fire chief to actually pass some gear on to other...
Yes.
To other fire departments. I, I assume that if that was a possibility on, on this thing, that they would look to do so.
I'm sure they will.
Yeah.
There's a tight-knit community out there and...
Yes, it is very...
A lot of people that are not as well-financed as we are, don't have the generosity of some of our citizens. But I know they've done it in the past. You are correct.
Well, I move to accept the generous donations listed from the Cascade Foundation and ascend letters of thanks.
Second?
Move seconded.
I would just say, considering the generous donation, can we get them a big card?
Well, we do have a letter here that we will all be signing this evening.
Put it in a, put it in a big card.
Fire Department actually does something really nice for them.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. Further discussion? I mean, no, no, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Great. Don't leave without signing. We have no committee resignations or applications this evening. The first, the next item is a request by the Ashwood, Ashwood Waldorf School for reduction in the Opera House rental fee, and I believe we have a member of that community. Why don't you come on up here, please, to the...
I can't believe I'm this early in the afternoon.
Neither can we.
I squeezed you in because I know the committee, the cemetery committee is going to take hours.
Oh, okay, okay.
So what are, what are you requesting this year?
So we are, we're requesting a payment of $700. We, we get, the school gives the eighth grade $500 to do a production at the Rockport Opera House, and I think it's been that much probably for a long time. And it's not really enough to cover what we need to do in order to have the students be confident with their performances when we open. So we're requesting, it's really a twofold request. We got a generous budget from the Opera House of $939, but we, we are requesting that we only pay $700 and that we have more time in the Opera House than the $939 would have covered. So I put down the times that we were requesting to be there and then the total payment as $700. And last year, when I came, I said that we would commit to doing a better job financially with, with, with the Rockport Opera House, so we're requesting two fewer days than we requested last year. Because last year, we did from Monday to Friday, and this year, we're going to try to just go in on Wednesday and be ready by Thursday night to perform. So we're trying to work responsibly with the Opera House, but we're hoping that you can help us with this.
And if I remember correctly, the amount that you're suggesting that you pay this year is a little more than you paid last year. Is that correct?
I think we paid 700 last year too.
Okay.
But it was, the amount that we were supposed to pay was quite a bit more last year, so, yeah.
Other questions?
So, yeah, I just want to have Terri's in the audience and come up and give us a little bit of history on this. Maybe that would be helpful. And before you, this is, we have given you rebates twice, right?
Yeah. As soon as my class hit middle school. Part of the reason is we're doing more, we're doing bigger productions, because the teacher last year and I are both from the theater, so we're, we're doing more, more difficult productions and so we need more time in the Opera House, I think, so, I think. Do you want me to leave while she's...
No, you can, you can back her up.
Yeah, you can stay there while Terry comes on up. Yep.
Go ahead, Terry.
Hi.
Hi.
Terry Smith, house manager, Rockport Opera House. So you're looking for a history with...
Yeah, what, I mean, we, I, I think last year, we, we left the school with the admonition that we would give them a second year of this, but, but that it, you know, they really had to figure things out by the third year. So how do you feel about what they're asking? They're asking for two things, a reduction and more time than, what, the $939?
Oh.
No, less time than...
Than last year.
Less time than last year, yeah.
And yes, I would concur with Leslie that what she said, that the last year, they had a, but they were there for almost a full week and this year, it's just three days, with the promise to be out by the end of the third day, which is great. It looks like the extra time that they're requesting would be an extra possibly $150, because it's mostly rehearsal time, which for us, that means just having the building open longer. It's not a huge request and it's, I honestly feel like it's, it's not a difficult request to, to honor. I think what, what I would want to be careful with, especially in scheduling someone to come out and lock up, is making sure that, that time period, like can we, can they stick to that time? I know with theatrical productions, it's different from a wedding or from, sometimes even concerts where you, and Leslie can probably attest to this or, or offer some insight, but when you're putting a play together, it takes, you end up spending more time on it than you planned. It's just things come together more when you get closer to the date. So I think, I understand her, you know, that need for, we're probably going to need more time. So to answer your question, I would feel comfortable with more rehearsal time. And I would ask that, you know, with, with this decision, is it going to be like, no matter how much time is used, it's only going to be $700? Or is there a cap on it? I think that'd be good for our, for our end of it.
Well, one presumes that the middle kids are going to like fall over dead after doing this three days in a row, that, and just in terms of exhaustion, if, if it's compressed into three days. So if I'm keeping track of my numbers correctly, when, when you guys did the contract, and Leslie said we need this much time, you said nonprofit rate in town, blah, blah, $939. And she said, oops, gosh, we really need just a little bit extra time, so that would take it up to $1,089, right? $150 on top.
Correct, yeah.
And so they're asking for $389 rebate, one-third of the...
Correct, I think so, yeah. If it's going down, well, actually, if it's going up from 700...
Well, no, because there's 150 on top.
Oh.
Of that. So, so after the contract was written up, the school realized, oh, we, we really should have some more rehearsal time. Is that accurate, Leslie?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
So...
Ask a question?
Yeah.
Thank you. Are, are we the town or the taxpayers going to lose any money on this, as far as covering your time and heating the building?
Yeah, I mean, that's all part of it. Whenever people are in the building, that means the heat's on longer. For my time, or even our custodian, Richard Dinsmore, it's just a little bit of extra time for us to come down and unlock the building and lock it back up. If needed more on the phone for answering questions, then that's more time. From personal experience, last year, they, they did need a little bit more in the beginning. Since they're scaling back their time this year, they may not need as much one-on-one or staff time.
Maybe I'll just follow it up with the statement. For me, the only thing that I'm really concerned about is that the town doesn't lose money. Other than that, especially considering it's a local school, where they're going to get more locals in here, my only kind of threshold is, is that we don't lose money on it. Other than that, I don't feel that, this is a great public space to be utilized by the community. As long as we kind of hit a break even, I'm fine with that. I don't feel we need to make money. So like, your time, the custodian's time, plus heating and electric, you think over the course of those three plus or more, plus days would be over $700 for expenses?
I don't have an answer to that. I'm not sure. I need to do more math.
I just figured our fee schedule covered all of that and netted us a little bit of money.
Yeah, making money and Rockport Opera House never go in the same...
They don't, yeah, I've got you.
It's, it's, yeah.
You know, time of year is so critical to what the cost would be to operate.
Right.
So we're really looking at policy?
Yeah.
And when, when things like this came up, when the Opera House Committee was asked sort of the protocol of this, what was the, what was the response to the, from the committee?
They wanted, I believe they wanted to continue status quo, so the...
Which is to say that the prices would be in effect, and then the appeals process would...
That's off of Rick and I, yeah, and then if, it would go through Rick, or myself, Rick, and then ultimately up to the select board.
Okay.
To an, if, to answer Owen's question, I mean, I agree with you, Owen, totally, that the, I mean, it's a good thing. It's, they're a school, they're a local school. And, you know, are we, are we covering the costs of them being here by $700? I would guess, yes, we are covering. We're not making money.
I don't want to make any money off of them.
Yeah, we're not making any money, but are we covering the costs for Terri's time? And, you know, they, the difference in the heat is, you know, it may, we may set the heat down to, what, 60, 60 or 65 upstairs, if they're not here?
Oh, yeah.
And so the difference is, there's a little bit of difference there, and then there's the, you know, there's opening and closing time and the answering phones, but I, you know, I think $700 covers that.
I was kind of figuring it would.
Yeah.
Like, we'll make, I'll make money off weddings, off this place, but not...
But it's, we're not, we're not, at the end of the day, we're not, you know, I think we're still making some money that's above and beyond what our costs are, but not, not huge money.
I still would, I mean, I know the Opera House Committee decided basically to punt on it and throw it back to us, and I'm happy to make the decision on something like this, but it would be kind of nice to have a little bit of a guideline from the Opera House Committee, if they don't want to make the decision, but for them to say, "Well, if it's a nonprofit based in Rockport, you know, then, then the Opera House Committee suggests that the select board give a little more deference." Just something like that.
Well, I mean, they have, they have already done that by virtue of the pace, by the fee schedule. There is, the lowest prices available are that.
I understand, but then we're asked, we're in a situation now where we're being asked to go even below that.
Right.
So that's, that's, I guess I would like some, just something general from the Opera House Committee. If they don't want to make the decision and want to have us make the decision, I'm fine with that, but it would be nice to hear from the committee. Maybe just to have the answers to the questions that Owen just asked right at hand.
So is it, are you looking for something that would be more like a list of...
Just, I mean, I'm just, I'm trying not, and I don't, we haven't, because we, we get this request from Ashwood, you know, for the last couple of years, and we haven't had any others that I'm, that I recall. And so maybe that's working, and maybe we don't need to mess with it, but...
We'll be able to give them an answer by the first February meeting, because I don't...
Give who an answer?
We'll be able to give Ashwood. Oh, I thought you were waiting to hear a little bit back from...
No, 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 I'm just saying in the future.
Sorry, I was looking at dates. And I was like, oh, no, I don't, I don't want to like delay them, because it's next month.
No.
Well, I'm happy to, you know, have the Opera House continue to be the most friendly Opera House in the entire state.
Second.
Comma?
I retract my second, okay.
But once again, I mean, I have to say, as a liaison to the Opera House Committee, who did say, "We have a policy, we're just going to stick to it." You know, the policy is, this is what they pay, and if they don't like it, they go to Rick and to Terri, and then if, if the applicant's not satisfied with that, they come here. So I just, you know, just want to say, let's see what we can do to have this less or not at all in next year. It's something I have to say.
All right.
Well, I'll move to approve the request by Ashwood Waldorf School for a reduction of fees to $700 for use of the Opera House, February 15 through 17, 2017, as outlined in the Opera House rental agreement.
Second.
Move seconded. Further discussion?
Question. And then also, too, would that mean, is it just at where, what they've requested so far, or if it turns out there's, they need more time, will it, is there going to be like a limit on that? Or is it, no matter what?
Well, from the discussion, I understood they needed $150 more worth of time than what the rental agreement said. And so I'm, word to the motion specifically not to talk about the reduction, but just to say what they would pay, and I'm assuming that that would include that extra time, which is, how many extra hours is that? I don't know.
Two, three-hour blocks, six hours, right?
I don't, I don't know. I've got from eight to 3:15, from eight to eight, and from eight to nine.
Yeah, that's all listed right here.
Right. Tired kids, yeah.
I did, yeah.
Okay.
I did.
We just want to live there for this period.
Sleeping bags.
So for tho, that period of time, and so, like I say, I think the, the original contract, I didn't put those numbers in there in the original contract, because I understood that they were not correct, so...
So for a fee of $700?
A fee of $700 is what the motion that I made.
You haven't taken your vote yet. I'll wait till you take your vote, and then I'll say what I want to say.
You want to convince us to vote one way or the other, you can...
How about you backwards?
Don't, don't make us take a second vote to rescind the first vote.
Okay. Will you take your vote?
Not yet, we haven't yet.
As you please, you have the microphone, so...
I can wait till you're done, but I do want to say something after you're done. And it won't, it's not going to change, no matter what you decide.
Oh, okay.
I promise, it's not going to change.
Do we have further discussion? All in favor of Ken's motion? Okay. That passes?
Thank you very much. I just want to say that, that our school, I think, is, I don't know if we've properly expressed our gratitude for what you've done for us in the past, and we really love working in this space. We're a, we're a traditional school, and we really think that the arts are important. And for me, coming from out of town and being in Maine, and getting to do theater in this space is really thrilling. So whatever your decision was, we would try to make it work to, to be able to pay. And I feel like we do have a responsibility to make it work and to try to raise more money in the future, so we're really looking at it. And reducing our time is difficult, but I feel like you've really helped us out, and we want to be, we want to be responsible users of the Opera House. So we use it for our fundraiser, our big fundraiser dance, and we use it for, for other things we do at the school. But I really just want to tell you that we're, we're all really grateful to the town and to you for your support of what we're trying to do, so thank you. Thank you very much.
Our next item is to hear from the Cemetery Committee. Hello?
Who's going to take the minutes? I hope you have them written down, your statement.
It's all online.
Oh, right.
So the cemetery met last week, and one of the things you had asked the Cemetery Committee to do was to review the prices that we're now charging. I did a little spreadsheet that shows what Rockport, Lincolnville, Rockland, and Camden charges, and we're right in line with all of them. So the committee recommended that the select board leave the prices as they currently are. And then the committee also would like to recommend to the select board that we extend the moratorium at Seabu Cemetery for another 12 months. We still haven't done anything in regard to expanding the cremation section. What we did decide to do was we have a subcommittee of five of our members to, in February, to meet once a week, to gather information on the columbariums, to bring back to the Budget Committee or the CIP program, to hopefully get some idea on what we need for funding to get that started. And David Farley has volunteered to have a site walk with us for the site over there, where we would put the columbariums, and to try to come up with an estimate on how much it would cost for the site work. And then the last piece of business that we discussed was in regard to the stones and the children that were found on, supposedly found on a piece of property on Amesbury, near the Amesbury Hills Cemetery. And in talking to Bob Williams, who is the head of Brooks Monuments, he said that those stones were actually in the storage building, or as some of us refer to as the dead house, and were taken out of there, were taken to his monument place to be repaired. And when he went to take them back to put on that piece of property where a psychic had said the children were buried, the owner of the property would not allow that to happen. So they've been setting at his business for probably 20 years now. So the committee really, to be fair to the Lawrences, who are the ones that have been said that these children are buried on their property, have decided the best thing to do in regard to the information that we've come across, because Rick, the Lawrences, and Bob Williams and I had a meeting, and we, Rick and I met a couple of times more with the Lawrences, the committee has recommended that we have those stones placed on a piece of land that's town-owned by that storage building at Amesbury Cemetery. And we put a plaque explaining that we don't know where these children are buried. I guess the parents of the pack of children, this two younger children, are buried in the cemetery, but we don't know that these two children are buried there. So that's why we would put all three stones on this vacant piece of land. So that's our recommendation to the select board, that is how we should handle that situation.
Okay.
What's that? We don't know. She's asking, what Callan is asking, do, does the town need to pay for the repairs? I don't know that Bob Williams said the town needed to pay for them. We haven't discussed that. It almost sounded to me like he might be more than willing to...
I think he wants to offload them.
Right, and he's willing to sign a letter. I haven't been able to reach him. I've left him voicemails on his phone.
He's skiing.
Somewhere. And I've sent him emails, but he's willing to sign a letter stating the information that I've just related to you.
So in 20 years from now, when, if it came, if it came up again, you'd have that record.
He goes and skis all winter.
Okay. We have three items here. The moratorium, we will be dealing with next as part of the regular agenda. It sounds like we probably need to make some kind of a decision regarding the children's stones and the placing of them, authorizing the Cemetery Committee to take that action. I know Rick's listing didn't, didn't indicate any of this, but, you know, this is something that's being presented to us tonight.
It would, it would, it would appear that probably the best thing to do would be to come up with a sketch of where the stones would go and a location of, you know, so you know exactly where they're going to be going.
What is this piece of land?
It's right next to the...
It's in the cemetery.
Right next to the vault or the storage building in the cemetery.
So it's not a vacant piece of land?
No, no, it's in the cemetery, it's just not assigned as a burial spot.
So you couldn't, you can't bury someone there, which is why we're going to put the stones there?
Right.
Because you can put stones there, but you can't put bodies there.
It is part of the town's property, because that's where the storage house is. So there's some vacant land around that storage house where we could place them.
Okay.
Just to have a place to honor those children. One of them was 10 months old. This happened back in 1855.
It's good to put it to rest. Okay.
Well, and as I was at the meeting, you know, the explanatory plaque, I think, is important, too, because I think if, if you go around to other cemeteries, you'll find that most cemeteries probably have a story like this, where something was lost or misplaced or something like that. And if, all we can do is do the best we can to explain it. And some people will find the history interesting. But the bottom line is that I think the committee basically decided, and remember, correct me if I'm wrong, we really don't know where those children are buried. We just don't know. And so we'll do the best we can, do the best we can.
Okay, so do we want to hold off then until...
Yeah, it, I would think you'd need to see where they, actually where it's going to go, and we can develop a sketch that will show that.
Okay, and...
Tell me why I need to see that?
You don't necessarily, I don't know that you need to do, but if you're uncomfortable with it at all, we can get you a sketch.
I mean, I don't, I, I don't know that, I mean, we don't authorize placement of stones or burials in general, anyway. I don't know that we need to necessarily...
Well, because those are on... Privately owned piece of property up in there.
If we don't approve it, who's going to make the decision about where to put these?
It's ultimately, ultimately, you're going to have to make that decision.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I suppose I can run the cemetery section.
You're the sexton or the assistant sexton.
Or if you can, you can just grant me the authority to, to place the stones.
What are we comfortable with? Brendan, I take it you're pretty much comfortable with...
I know that I'm not qualified, I'm not better qualified to do this than anybody else sitting here. I, I make a mo, is it appropriate to make a motion?
Yeah, it's always appropriate to make a motion.
So I make a motion that this board grants Rick the authority to place these stones in the most appropriate...
Hold on.
No, I like that, I like that.
You yourself are going to carry these...
Okay, okay, come on, wait.
Let Jeff finish the motion.
To cause to be placed.
Can I, can I make a suggestion before I second the motion?
Yes, please.
And it's just, instead of putting Rick's name in, just say, "The Cemetery Sexton."
The Cemetery Sexton, of course, that's what I meant to say.
Yes, that's what I thought.
The authority to cause to be placed.
Right.
These stones.
And plaque.
And plaque. In inappropriate...
Ooh, the plaque's going to cost us money, though.
That's what happens.
All right, good enough.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, do we want to discuss how much we're willing to cough up for the coffin placement?
Coffin?
I was just trying to make a joke here with coughing and coffins. Do we, yo, do we want to place a limit on the cost of this plaque?
I, again, the, I think that the...
Cost deemed appropriate by the sexton.
The sexton has a feel for the tolerance of this town and the board is...
Okay. And what about the letter from the man down at Brooks Memorials about the background, the history?
I assume that that would be filed appropriately.
Yes, we have it. She's just, did you say he's, he's off traveling someplace?
He skis in the winter, that's what he does.
Yep, so that's why we're not, because he was very, he was a really good guy. Came down and spent an hour and a half with us, I bet.
All right. We have the motion, have the sexton place the stones, etc.
Cause to be placed.
Cause to be placed. Do we have any further discussion?
Not at all.
I'm going to call...
Well, actually, we do in that this is a, this is a delicate matter that I'm sure has been dealt with most appropriately by the Cemetery Committee. So congratulations to the, all the moving pieces.
Yeah, I would agree. There's a lot of work done on, on the research on this with all good intentions.
Okay.
Thank to Helen for doing a lot of the research and for the Cemetery Committee also.
Okay. Hearing that, all in favor of the motion? Good. One other thing before we move on. There was a mention on prices and a recommendation for no change to the price schedule. Because there's no change, do we need to approve, again, the price schedule? Or can that just be continued? Are we willing to just let it go?
We don't need to take any action, because it remains in force.
Just want to make sure.
Incorrectly remembering, I, I thought we had a conversation that our pricing system was, was like wildly off.
We did, we did, and that's what the research, but it disproved it.
Incorrect.
So we had, we had somebody coming to speak to the Cemetery Committee about another issue, and he looked at our rates and said, "Your rates are way off. You should look at them." And the select board at that time instructed the Cemetery Committee to do that, but when the Cemetery Committee did that, they found that the prices were actually right where they ought to be.
Mm-hmm. In keeping with the local community... Mm-hmm. In keeping with the local community and other areas around the state, actually.
Quick question to my, oh, thank you. Uh, cemetery gurus, um, these things typically just stay this way until we think they should go up. Is there any reason that we do other municipalities or folks tack on just an ongoing small increase that is somehow cost of living associated?
This case would be cost of dying, but.
I mean, I think what happens basically is they're reviewed from time to time as necessary.
It's like the way the mooring fees get set.
Yeah.
I just, I want everything to be tacked to CPI.
Okay. Understood. Um, is that all we need to do with the cemetery committee? Do we have any further? Questions with the cemetery? None. Okay.
Anybody else wanna look at this down there?
I know, that's right.
I'm fine. Our next item is renewal of the moratorium on the sale of lots at Sea View Cemetery. Um, right now, we have a moratorium that is restricted only to Rockport residents, and that's due to a dwindling amount of space.
Thank you, Terry.
Well, I will, uh, make the motion for discussion purposes. I move to approve, uh, a, a moratorium of the sale of lots at Sea View Cemetery to only Rockport residents until January twenty-third, twenty eighteen, or one year from now.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion?
Now we're open for discussion.
I'm assuming this trend is gonna continue.
Well, the reason, one of the reasons for the moratorium, which is a short-term thing, is that if we get the columbarium in there, then all of a sudden we'll have a lot more room for cremated remains, and we'll be able to lift that moratorium, uh, because basically you can put more remains per square foot of cemetery space. So if we get the col, the, the idea of the committee, and I think of this board in the past, has been if we get the columbarium in there, then that will ease the space crunch that we have right now, and we will again be able to entertain non-residents who wanna have their remains interred there.
And what's our definition of resident? Property owner or voting or?
We discussed this last year and we came to agreement.
I mean, I think it's property owner or, or, uh, it's been liberally, uh, applied in the past. For example, if somebody lived for fifty years here and then retired to Florida, moved to Florida for two years and then passed away, you know, I think that, that, you know, in those situations has been.
Or if you go to Corey Hill, which is technically on Camden.
Those situations have been dealt with on a, flexible basis, I think.
What I was really driving at is why, well, if there's a space constraint, why don't we reserve it for Rockport residents, however that's defined?
That's pretty much what, what it is.
Full stop, not annually, not, I mean, why?
Well, well, to be crass about it, we make money on non-residents.
So it's, it's needed, it is.
The, uh, well, it is an extra source of revenue for the town and for the cemeteries, because the non-resident rates are significantly higher. And the only place that really is an issue is Sea View because of the beautiful nature of that cemetery. It's by the water. People wanna be there and, and, uh, so, um,
And it's surrounded by Camden.
Some towns do that. Some towns with their cemeteries just restrict them to their residence, period, and that's the end of the story. But Sea View is a, is a little bit of a special case.
The one down on Warrenton Street is restricted to people who live in Glen Cove area.
However that's defined.
Yeah, however that's defined.
Can you give me some sense of what the magnitude of the revenue is on an annual basis?
Uh, well, for the last year, it has been zero.
Pre-moratorium?
I'd have to ask.
I don't have the numbers with me, but, um, I would say the percentage probably would be more of Camden residents purchasing, um, cemetery lots in Sea View than Rockport residents in the past.
How many lots do we sell a year, Linda? A- approximately?
I wouldn't say we've sold more than maybe fifteen in the past year. But in the cremation section itself, there may be like forty spaces left. And so that's, and that's where mostly today people will purchase their lot is in the cremation section because at least seventy percent, I believe, is what the funeral directors have told us. People are cremated today, so they don't need a lot for full burial, so that's why it's so popular. And it borders Camden. It's right on Chestnut Street, so Camden residents want to be buried there.
I'm actually far less interested in how we define local. For all, I mean, for all intents and purposes, maybe you define it as Rockport and, uh, it's more, to, to me, it's just the annual nature of doing this is a little peculiar.
Well, this, and this is only the second time we've done it. And I mean, my, like I said, you're, you're absolutely right. It's that if we're gonna, if it's gonna be doing it every year, then we just make it a policy and be done with it. I think the columbarium changes, you know, once the columbarium is there, that does change the calculus somewhat. If once we build the columbarium, we decide, well, we still wanna restrict it, that, at that point, it becomes a policy decision and we just don't do the moratorium.
The, the idea was that we were gonna get this columbarium up and running in short order. Helen, uh, you step up, step up. Thank you.
Heaven Bartlett, Alexander Drive. So, um, if they got the columbarium, would it be full burials, Rockport only, columbarium, whoever?
Perhaps. We'd have to, we'd have to.
Cremation zone. Cremation's only for the whole cemetery?
No.
No, in the, in the columbarium.
The columbarium is only for, but I think what Heaven is asking is, is would the moratorium, at that, we'd have to have that discussion at that time, I think. You know, do we wanna, you know, allow for, for full burials restricted to Rockport residents only permanently? That's certainly something that I think the committee would wanna discuss.
One thing I, I think that we've, we've gone around about a few times, and, uh, you know, there's not a clear, there's not, there's not, not a clear vote um, that, that defines what you consider a Rockport resident. Is it a, is it, you know, somebody is a property owner here, should they be treated as a Rockport resident? If they, if they own a home here, but they, they don't reside here, but they pay taxes here, do they get the same treatment as a Rockport resident? You know, as opposed to somebody who happens to live here temporarily and rent, they can buy a lot tomorrow and then leave the week after, and they, they have their lot. But somebody who's had a, had a home here for generations and, but they don't reside here, can't buy that lot, that same lot.
That was part of our previous discussion.
You should be able to answer that, because.
There is, we do have a place in the rules where there is a special exception. So like if you moved away and went to Florida, and you used to be a resident here for twenty-five years, you moved to Florida and then you pass away.
But that requires a special exception.
Right. We can grant a special exception and you pay the non-resident rate.
Or the, uh, board.
I think the cemetery board. But, but the question would be, is, as far as, if you're, if, if you're a property owner and own a home here, do you get the same treatment as a Rockport resident?
Glad I thought we had decided in favor of.
We, we have a definition in the rulebook. I didn't bring the rulebook with me, but we do have a definition of what resident is. And I believe we've basically followed the same guideline that the state does in order for somebody to be able to register to vote.
Right. So they, they would not be eligible then to buy a lot.
Very defined.
Well, because it's, it goes in the same as, as to register to vote. So somebody who is a property owner here, and, I mean, then you can get into, do they just own land, or do they actually own a home here and they, they spend?
Rick, are you suggesting that there's something wrong with the policy? Because it sounds like we have a policy.
We, we do. And so then it means that we do have a policy, and currently it says that if you're, if you're a resident, and it's defined as like a registered, you have to be registered to vote here.
Well, eligible to register to vote.
Eligible to vote. Then, um, you get, you get to buy a lot, but if you don't.
We have a special exception for that.
No, well, it sounds, you know what, since we have these questions, I would like to ask the, uh, cemetery committee to put on the agenda of our next meeting, or like five meetings from now, um, to actually have us debate that, because it sounds as though there's a difference in the board. Because, because I, for one, would, would be interested in expanding on just that eligibility to vote. That doesn't seem fair to me if somebody has a, a, a house here, um, that, that they spend, you know, eight weeks in summertime here. Um, they're paying, my guess would be at that point, more taxes than some of us. And that makes them ineligible to be buried in what might be their favorite place. I, I, I think it's worthy of a discussion once we have the real wording in front of us.
But it doesn't really make them ineligible. They can have a special exception.
Right.
That's.
All right, so long, so long as that.
I'll, I'll keep this in mind for like April or May.
And the other question to ask Linda is, is in the daily, in the daily course of things, how often does this come up?
It's come up a couple of times in the twenty years I've been doing it.
Yeah, so. I think, I think quite honestly.
Everything's already defined for, for, if you don't fit the definition, we've got special exceptions.
Being a little bit flexible as, as Linda is, I think is probably fine.
Okay, we have a motion to continue the moratorium until next January twenty-third. Do we have further discussion on the moratorium question? Hearing that, all in favor of continuing this moratorium? Thank you. Uh, the next item, um, is a request, um, or, yeah, that if you recall, Ian Stewart, um, from Coastal Mountain Land Trust was here a couple of months ago to describe the, uh, round the mountain effort, and we have been asked whether we'd like to be, to sign on or endorse, um, that effort.
I move to endorse the work being done by the Coastal Mountain Land Trust and others on the Round the Mountain campaign and send in the attached letter of support from the board.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Discussion?
Wish them well.
This is, yeah, terrific work. Um, the more of this sort of stuff that can happen, the better. All for it.
And this does not require us to make any, uh, payments.
Nope.
So, but it does allow our name to be used in conjunction with this effort. Like there are a number of others that are, actually, I think it's in our packet.
Two logos, yeah.
See, right, you know, there, so, um, hearing no further discussion. All in favor? We, uh, don't leave without signing again. Wow, I gotta find where I am here. We got a lot of stuff here. Uh, the next item is the.
Quick question, do you want to sign the one that was in our packet, or are we gonna sign?
I've got one. I've got one here.
It's on pretty paper.
Yep. Uh, the next item is the approval of the MMA's legal contact list. We have it in our packets, uh, just listing who can contact MMA for legal services. Apparently, this hasn't been updated for a number of years. The reason we are doing this the way we are is so that the town manager can, uh, change the list in the future, as opposed to making it an ordinance or, or something like that.
I move to authorize the list, uh, as presented. I move to authorize the list as presented?
Yeah.
Okay, and send the letter included in your packet to main municipal association reflecting the positions in the list as well as allowing the town manager to make revisions in the list or to the list as needed.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and that's another thing that's in our little packet here.
Right.
It'll wear out your hand tonight signing things. Yes.
I would like to suggest that the last three positions on that list be struck from the automatic list and that those positions should go through the town manager.
I agree with you. How do I do that? Do you want me to retract?
Well, we're, we're still in discussion.
We're in discussion.
And I, I think the list is too long, quite honestly. I don't have any problem with the people that are in these positions using services right now, but I think, I think the list ought to be limited to those who we know are regularly gonna use it, which would be the town manager, uh, the, the planner, the assessor, and, uh, the finance director.
I also use them for voting elections.
And, and for the town clerk also. But I think the others, while they may have need to use it from time to time, it seems to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it would be rare. Um, and that if they needed to use it, that, that they could simply go to the town manager and make the request, and then the town manager could then amend the list as needed for, even, even on a temporary basis. I'm just concerned that, and I, like I say, I don't, right now, I don't see any problem with the people that are in those positions, but I wouldn't want the harbor master, for example, to be calling MMA legal services without going through the town manager. And I, I, I just don't think that's a good thing to do.
That was, the list, the, the only, uh, the only one that was not on the list was the planner, and it was really because when the list was developed, we didn't have a planner. So if you wanna change the list, feel, you know, that's your, that's.
I mean, I throw that out for discussion. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Yeah.
I would like to see the list be shorter.
Because we are members of MMA, this is one of the benefits that we have, is being able to contact MMA legal at no charge to the town.
Right.
Now, they can't give us advice on all things, but they can give us a lot of advice, or at least point, start pointing us in the right direction on almost everything.
Is, is there, can you have a concern that this is gonna be abused in some way, or is it just that you want the town manager aware of all town related business?
I don't think it's gonna be abused with the current personnel that we have, but I just think as a matter of policy that these requests should go through the town manager, except for those who are, who you know are gonna use it on a regular basis, which is the ones that I named and, and Linda also.
That's kinda where I was going with the last three, in that, um, if there's an issue or if there's a desire to contact MMA for something of those, um, volunteer-appointed boards, that it should be something that the town manager needs to be, should be aware of. So that's just a mechanism to make sure that, that town manager is aware of, of any questions and what have you. So, so what you're, what you would be doing in striking these from the list is not to say that they cannot contact. You're saying that they would not be able to contact without some.
They just need to talk to Rick, and then Rick can put them on the list. If Rick determines that it's a, a need that they have, then Rick can just call MMA and say, I authorize. And part of the letter that we're writing is we're giving Rick, the, the motion, we're giving Rick the authority to change the list as needed. So, uh, but I just, I would feel more comfortable if, if the policy was such that the general rule is for it to go through the town manager.
Who, who do you want on the list? Then it'd be.
Well, it looks like from Ken's list is strike the fire chief down to the bottom.
I think that's right.
What about the CEO LPI?
Did you mention?
I didn't mention, I don't know, is, is he, I don't know, is that, I shouldn't say he. Is that position likely to use that on a regular basis?
Yes, yes, that, with, with code enforcement things, it's, it's often.
I think the list should include those who, who are likely to use the service in reasonably frequently in the normal course of business. And then anything else should go through the town manager.
The planner and, because the.
Yeah, definitely.
The planner, the finance director, the town clerk.
So what, his, his motion would just strike from here down to there, that's.
Okay, all right.
But these guys are all in.
You wanted the assessor, right, Ken?
Yeah.
Yep. Approve everybody down to assessor and nobody below that.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, that's, that's what Ken's, yeah.
Okay, that's gonna require the.
I'll, I'll move to amend the motion to strike, uh, the positions after assessor in the list.
Second.
Moved in the amendment.
Right.
Um, I'm gonna call for a quick vote on the amendment. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Nope, okay. Now we're back to the original, which now excludes the fire chief through board of assessment review chair. Do we have further discussion?
Not to say that those folks can't use it, but just that they'd have to go through the town manager, which I think is appropriate.
Okay. And that's, no further discussion on that? Uh, call for the vote. All in favor? All right. Though, what we have in here includes, still includes those names on it.
Right, so we'll have to get you another list.
We'll have to give you another list.
Another letter.
Does it require being signed by the entire select board?
That, that's what they were requesting, yes, or, yeah.
Okay.
Just let us.
Then have, have Stacy or somebody send us an email when it's.
If it, if it doesn't require, we'll, we'll, if it just means that the chair of the select board can do that, so if your motion just is to, if permitted, to allow the chair to do it?
I'm, I'm pretty sure the motion said that, yeah, I think so.
The motion also said, and if, if necessary, to permit the chair to sign the letter.
Ouch. Just, just for kicks.
It's totally in Robert's rules.
Just for kicks, I move that we, uh, we allow the, uh, chair of the board to, uh, sign that.
Second.
By themselves.
Move second.
Is there a motion on the floor?
No, we, we, we passed on it.
We already voted on that motion. Now we have a new motion.
Right.
All in favor? Seconded. Okay.
That would be if MMA accepts it.
Yeah. Uh, we now move on to a quick claim deed, or deeds, I'm not exactly sure here.
Well, plural yours.
Um.
I move to approve the quick claim deeds from the municipality of the town of Rockport to Eswar, why did I bother to do this? Pre-adarshan for Samasat time shares at T O three A seven zero three four and T O three B three O two seven.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Hold on.
I just have one question. You, the information. Your, the information we were provided is that this covers years two thousand and eleven to twenty-sixteen?
Well, there's a special policy in regard to time shares.
Yeah.
So, typically, what happens with the Samasat resort, if you have a time share and you're not paying your maintenance fee, more than likely, you're not paying your real estate taxes. In this particular case, they have been paying the Samasat their maintenance fee, which is three or four hundred dollars a year, but they've neglected to pay the real estate taxes. So, typically, what happens, if they don't pay the maintenance fee, the Samasat sells these time shares, pays us the back taxes. They had no desire to do that because they were getting their money, so we're not getting ours, it's not their problem. But what happened was, a little while ago, a couple of months ago, they sent a check to pay for their two thousand and sixteen real estate taxes.
They is the owners of?
The owners.
Yep.
And forgetting they hadn't paid all those years. So, that's when I contacted them and talked to the brother-in-law, and they had moved, they didn't give a forwarding address to us, they always had the person who was living in their former property forward their mail, which hadn't happened. So, that, it fell through the cracks, and they don't wanna lose their time share, so I have a check for fifteen or sixteen hundred dollars to pay for all the back taxes and all the fees.
Interestingly enough, they moved to California five years ago, but their check still has their Massachusetts address on it.
Um, I thought, don't we put those, if they're not paying their real estate taxes, into foreclosure?
But then it's up to the Samasat to sell those, it's not the same policy as your home.
But wouldn't we, wouldn't we have normally foreclosed on it if the Samasat didn't come forward?
We have foreclosed, but we don't have the authority to sell them, no matter what.
Oh, okay.
There's a policy that was signed years ago, which gives the Samasat the exclusive right to sell those time shares.
Okay, now I understand.
So, one, two, three, four, fi-, five or six years' worth of taxes on these properties, times two properties, is fifteen hundred dollars?
Yes.
They must have owned, that's a lot of money.
It's only for the time share.
It's like forty.
For a small slot of time.
Yeah, like twenty-something dollars a year.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm surprised it's so high.
Well, there was-
With penalties and interest?
Interest and penalties, yeah.
I think it's awesome.
Okay.
Thanks for sending us a check.
We have the motion seconded. All in favor? That passes. The next item is to change the title of, from interim police chief to police chief, or police chief.
I move to change the title of Randy Gagny from interim police chief to police chief, effective immediately.
Second.
The camera on that.
Who are you looking to?
Looking at Randy at home.
Second, then that's creepy.
He's not watching.
You think the police are watching me? No, no, no.
The only person that was watching was me, and I just shut it off.
Boy, this got really exciting. Everybody shut us off. Okay. But, this is based on our discussion that we had at our joint meeting, everybody felt it was going well, and, you know, let's make it official.
And it's assigned to our officers that have some stability in the department, which I think is important.
Yep. Any further discussion?
My only two cents is that at some point in time, we, as, as just us, and not Camden, I think we need to have a more robust discussion about, is to say, and I know that I missed the joint Camden-Rockport meeting, and I, and I, things are going well, things are going great, don't get me wrong, but I think we're due our town to, at some point, spend some time, talk about what we want our police department to look like going into the future. Is it merged with Camden in a formalized sense? Is it not? I don't know, but I think we should, we should discuss that more in depth at some other point in time. But in like the next six to nine months.
Well, you'll have the discuss, I mean, it came up at the meeting, with the joint meeting, and the, the recommendation, the consensus was at that meeting was to, to extend the contact tract for the shared police chief for, for three years, to develop that contract, and, so that-
Three years.
That will affect the budget. So, I'm basically building a budget based on that.
But I, I think what Owen is saying is that, conceptually, and, and, you know, is it, is it in the direction that we wanna go?
I think it's a good discussion to have, I think that it's moving slowly as we have is a good thing. As, as far as talking about merging the two departments, I think that's premature, maybe at some point.
I had no clue, it was a three-year contract.
Again, Owen's point is well spoken, that we, we should at some point have a discussion of what we want our police department to look like.
Right, I agree.
You know, are we comfortable with the current staffing? Do we need, do we wanna increase it? Decrease it? What?
Wait, just to clear Owen's concern a little bit is, it, it is a three-year agreement of which we can opt out of anytime we want.
Yeah, okay.
So, there's an opt-out paragraph in there that there's, we can opt out at anytime we want.
And it hasn't been signed yet, it's, right now, the, the current agreement goes through the end of June, and then the, the consensus at the, at the joint meeting was to, to re-up it for a three-year term, because both boards felt that things were going well. There was some chatter about how to deploy the supervisory resources, and, and how that's gonna happen, and I think that that's all good discussion to have, and that could be certainly part and parcel of, of our discussion about what we want.
But there, there is a very liberal opt-out, so if at any point, if even in a, you know, a year from now, you decided you wanted to get out of it, you can get out of it, it's not, it's not like you're bound to it for, and you can't get out of it without penalties, there's no financial penalty, there's no-
Heaven forbid that something happens to Randy, and the new chief that they appoint is not to our liking. You, we've got the ability to-
Oh, yeah, no, it's all good. I mean, I, I do, I don't know the extent to which the public is paying attention to this discussion, but at least for me personally, if there are members of the public who are not happy with this trend, I have yet to hear about it.
Mm-hmm.
I've spoken to exactly one person who had some very low level, "I want us to be our own town," and, you know, that was, that's as far as it got, so, I, I would hope if anyone has feelings about that, that are, that are not supportive, that, that they'll find a way to let the select board know about it.
Yep. I would hope, anytime somebody is dissatisfied, that they would bring something forward. Do we have the motion on the table? We've had discussion. All vote, all in favor? Is now chief. Our next item, this is-
I'm gonna talk for a while about this one, can I get some water? Do you wanna take a quick break? Do we have a power through?
Eight-twenty.
Just go get some water.
I've been sitting all day, Bill.
While I announce it, go get a drink of water.
Thank you.
All this is, is an administrative procedure that basically-
Let's wait to introduce it first. He's on the legislative committee that's been talking about it, so.
Yes, I know he is. What we have before us is a recommendation from the town attorney that we post a notice, effectively saying, "We are not gonna take any building permit applications or use applications at this time, and not until we have had an opportunity to further discuss and come to an agreement on what it is." It's just, you know, it's an easier step than declaring a moratorium, which, this is just, we're still open to discussion on this, and we know that the legislature's already looking at extending effectively the impact, the impact of the law coming into effect for the commercial and social aspects for another three months beyond where the normal rulemaking would go. So, that's the introduction. Oh, you're on the Legal Affairs Committee, correct, that is discussing this whole process right now?
So, we're done, we voted on it, and unless there's a snow day tomorrow, we will probably vote on it in the House. If there is a snow day, we could have an emergency thing on Wednesday, and worst-case scenario was Thursday, for it to get on the governor's desk by Sunday at the absolute latest.
This is the extension.
It's a three-month extension with certain nuances about it.
Otherwise known as a moratorium?
It's a moratorium, it's, so-
At the state level, though.
At the state level. And then whenever it's inappropriate, I'll give you my pitch as to why I do not think this is a good idea.
This, or?
I do not think this is a good idea.
Okay. Rick, you were gonna?
Yeah, I mean, basically, it's, what it, all it does is, it just lets potential people know that there's no, there's no need to come in, come rushing in and give us any, any requests at this point, because the rules haven't been made yet, and there's, they can't queue up and say, "Okay, I'm gonna be the first one in, I'm gonna be the first one to have my case taken." According to town council, this is a procedure that can be adopted administratively, and just administratively internally, but he said it suggested it would be better if the select board approved that administrative procedure. It's, it's really, it's simply just an administrative procedure of how we're gonna handle those things once the, you know, it's basically saying, until they, until they come up with the rules and until everything's done, we're not accepting any applications.
I'm, I'm a little confused as to why a queue would be a bad thing in, in terms of, I mean, like, for instance, somebody who had the idea to do something commercially in Rockport can't do, can't really apply to the planning board, for instance, because there's no basis for them to, but if they were to at least contact Jamie and say, "When this thing gets going, I want to be in the queue," and they're first in the queue, what, what damage is that to the town, and what's the burden? The, the paragraph here says, "This will allow the town of Rockport time to consider options without having a burden of requests sitting in the wings." There's no burden if they're just sitting there.
No burden.
So, so I don't know why we would, what, you know, why we would penalize an early bird.
I'm gonna get to you next.
Yeah, why we would penalize an early bird, and maybe I'm saying the same thing you would do, but, and, and why we would, if, if we do push everything off, it seems to me, if there's a bunch of people that wanna do it, then all of a sudden, we have four, or five, six things all at once, and that seems more like a burden than having people in the queue. So, it seems somewhat counterintuitive to me, although on the other hand, I think that this process of looking at this is an advantage of us hiring the attorneys that we did, you know, with that sort of package deal. But in this particular case, personally, at this point, I remain unconvinced that this is a move we should make.
And before I go to Owen, if the position, or the capability is there for them to announce that they want, it becomes public record.
Right, it's a strategic move for somebody.
Well, yeah, but it's also, then opens the whole thing to saying, "We don't want it, we want it, we don't want it here, we want it over there, and we can start having discussions here at our table because of people coming in and speaking during public comments, saying, 'I've heard that this application has been put in, and I wanna have a say on it because I know it's gonna be a while, I may be out of town at the time, but I wanna make, I wanna have my comments addressed now.'" This is telling people that you're not gonna put it in.
Ah, but isn't that a good thing to, I mean, almost everything, let's face it, almost everything the ORC does is reactive in nature, so someone's gonna come, you know, to change something, someone's gonna come in and say, "I wanna do this," and then they go, "Oh, well, we haven't considered that yet, let's open up the door." Why not have a six-month discussion rather than a six-week discussion?
Well, all this is-
If, if somebody wants to advance their, advance that, that notion of, of having a business.
And this in no way inhibits the town's ability to influence or have a discussion about what they want their community to do. The onus falls almost entirely on the business owner, on, they're taking a gamble. Is this town going to approve this or not? And so, with the town not bearing any of the risk here, and our ability still intact to reject this as soon as the state's moratorium is up, or a week before, or whatever we choose to do, I don't see why doing a preemptive move, limiting folks' abilities to, like Jeff is saying, get some pieces into play, knowing full well the risks, it's very similar to, like, the revocable license. If you're willing to take this risk, Mr. Business Owner, knowing, or Mrs. Business Owner, knowing full, full well that we, the town, may pull the rug right out from under you, go ahead.
Um, I wonder in terms of the-
Wait, before you start, was that what you wanted to say?
I, I agreed with the-
Okay.
Basically-
I said I was gonna recognize you next, so, was that what you were-
I could keep talking about it for a bit, but yes, that's what I wanted to say.
And, and I haven't made my decision yet, but basically, in, in terms of the ORC, is there any value, I ask the rest of the board, is there any value in having the ORC examine this question without any applications on the table? In other words, deciding, look at the ORC, look at the plan of the town and say, "Okay, first of all, do we wanna recommend allowing this use in town anyplace, and if so, where do we wanna allow it, and, and then what, with what?"
You're stepping over this to the whole issue of what does the town wanna do with this in nine months.
More as geospatial planning.
I raised this question to you a couple of weeks ago, and, and your, your take at the time was, "We have a full plate."
Yeah, and I think, that's right, and I think, but the ORC is not gonna look at this until the summer, I don't believe, because we've got, we have a full plate right now that has to be finished up by March, so it'll be the ORC's summer session that looks at this, I've already warned them, but my question is, and, and the ORC will have to look at it in the summer, I don't think there's any way around that, but my question is, do we want the ORC to look at this with basically a clean plate, without, without any applications hanging in the balance, or do we want to allow an application to get in the queue, and then have them look at it saying, "Well, you know, we know there's somebody who has applied in, in this zone, or somebody who's applied in this zone, and now, now that makes the discussion a little bit different." I just asked the question.
Okay, Jeff?
I think on this particular question, that this board needs to lead the entire discussion. I think that this board needs to take input from the public, something that we're much more used to doing than the ORC, and as-
Well, whatever the ORC comes out, we still have to endorse and hold a public hearing and take public input. And we can take it either before we send it to the ORC, or we can take it after, or both.
But you're right, I mean, I think, that's, we give the ORC their, their task, and we can frame that task however we like. We can say, as, I mean, we could decide not to send it to the ORC, we could make the decision ourselves and not involve the ORC at all if we wanted to. We could just say, "We don't wanna permit it," and direct the planner, and, you know, put the ordinance on the ballot ourselves without the ORC's input if we wanted to, I wouldn't suggest that, but certainly, we could frame the question to the ORC the way we want it framed.
And-
Which, which allows for our leadership.
You're right, and in doing so, I think it is well advised to, A, getting back to this particular thing, allow early entrepreneurs to come and give us an indication of, of their plans and what they would do if they were free to do so. That gives us more information, and quite frankly, it, it gives people who are opposed to that idea more time to coherently come up with, with their thoughts in, in the, in the opposition, I yield.
And there's just, there's also a very broad, I like the, the concept of letting ORC give us some sort of geospatial, you know, zoning framework for, "Hey, this is where we think it would be good," and not. What's interesting about the language that was in here, I mean, you're restricting everything, cultivation, manufacturing, testing, sale and consumption of retail, so that extends everywhere from the downtown district, where there may be a storefront, all the way to some of our rural places where they may want to cultivate, you know, for, you know, retail sales further on down the line, so, I mean, it really affects the entirety of the town's ability to, to engage with this.
Are you looking at? You look at the- The last sentence of the fourth parag, third paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask the board members a question?
Sure. Go ahead.
My impression, when I read this, is that if we were to enact this, we would be sending a signal that we are looking for an opportunity not to have these businesses in the community. That, that-
We are shying away from supporting-
We are shying away from support, now, I'm not suggesting we, we support them either, but what I am suggesting is that if someone were contemplating, like, looking around at, for communities that are gonna be supportive of the business that they have in mind, enacting this would be sending a signal, "Look elsewhere." that are gonna be supportive of the business that they have in mind, enacting this would be sending a signal, look elsewhere.
Did you read the article, I think it was, not this Sunday, but the past Sunday, I think it was in the Portland, well, Main Sunday Telegram, about the sudden surge in people looking for large commercial structures where they could.
Right, which, which then up the value of those, of those structures.
There's a land rush.
So, I really just wanted to ask the other members, do, do, do you, do you see it the way I see it? That, that there is a signal to this?
It's certainly, this would certainly, um, there's one business in town that I, my understanding is I believe they're, they're interested in, in, in setting up shop in, in Rockport. This would certainly redirect their, their energies towards another place if we were to put this particular, we won't call it a moratorium, but we'll call it, uh.
Notice.
A, a notice. I, I think it would do exactly that. And having not made the decision, having not had the conversation, I think it's disingenuous for us to, to start to clamp down on it, because we haven't even discussed it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wanna make sure the public understands, I, I'm not indicating a support for this either. We haven't begun to have this conversation.
Exactly, yeah.
Right, one of the reasons for this is, when I went back to the lawyers, because more and more communities are adopting moratoriums, you know, all around the state, and we have not adopted a moratorium. But my question to the lawyer, to our counsel was, well, what happens if the rulemaking authority suddenly, you know, not knowing what the legislature was gonna do, but suddenly turned around and they got everything done really quickly, and all of a sudden, they've, they've approved everything, it's all signed and sealed and delivered, and we haven't had a chance to, um, in, in three months, and we haven't had a chance to get our feet under us about, um, how we're gonna deal with.
Yeah, but this doesn't get our feet under us.
And I can give you about a ninety-eight percent.
Yeah, that's, according to the lawyer, it does.
We are not that, we haven't even, we haven't even populated the joint standing committee.
What does the lawyer say that this does for us?
This just gives us, it just, it just puts people on notice that they can't even apply until those.
But they can't get one, I mean, we can't give it to them.
It just gives, it's a belt and suspenders, it just gives us an additional layer of protection.
Having, having grown up with a father as a lawyer and a brother as a lawyer, this is the lawyer doing his job to make the town's job easier, I don't think it's the right thing to do.
And the other lawyers in this office are doing everything they can to get it passed, too, which just makes it hilarious to me. I get it, they work in.
I missed something.
Oh, one of the head lobbyists is Bernstein Shore.
Oh, I'm.
Down there lobbying us to get it right on the state end.
I mean, even our lawyer, you know, I can't, shouldn't say, but, you know, I think it's a, they can fall on either side of this. This isn't, this isn't meant as an attempt to stop that. It's a meant to just, it meant.
Don't get started.
It's meant as just to give you, to give the town an opportunity to say, we're, you, you're not gonna get pushed into making a decision until all the rules have been decided.
Tell me how the town doesn't already have that opportunity.
It does, it does for the most part, and particularly where there's another three-month extension, so you do have time.
Let me ask this, in the normal course of things, if somebody comes and, and makes an application to the planning board for a change of use of property, is there a defined timeframe that that has to be acted on by the planning board?
Because Ag's not gonna have the rules.
They could be uncharacteristic, unfriendly.
Well, and on top of which, if they're asking for a use that's not already defined as an acceptable use, planning board hasn't.
Well, it would be, it would be not legal.
Yeah, well.
Well, th- these uses, though, could fall under any number of uses in our land use ordinance.
I can jump in.
My advice is if you're comfortable with the way it's proceeding through the legislature, which, you know, frankly, I, I don't see it coming out of the legislature, you know, anytime soon, I, so I see plenty of time.
It still has to go to the rulemaking.
We're doing, we're trying to do them in tandem.
And that's gonna take a lot of time, and then, you, you're not looking at anything for.
No, you're looking at the beginning of twenty eighteen to finally have everything buttoned up.
Right, yep.
So I also wanna go back to the process, I think, that this board should undergo, which is to say, the O R C, the reason I think we need to take leadership on it is, the O R C is not, you know, the, the first, last, and only word on it, because they have to look at the, the comprehensive plan, they, I mean, there's a lot of things that they, they look at first, and I think that we're in a better position to frame the, the question going to them. Back to.
I just have one final thing to say, and I appreciate the openness of the board, and to something that I know is near and dear to Ken's heart, if, if not approving this, I felt in any way endangered, Rockport residents, children's accessibility to marijuana, anything like that, I wouldn't be saying, this is, this is ridiculous. But everything, there are so many safeguards in place, it's, it's not by not approving this, something's gonna magically pop up and there's gonna be a pot dispensary in downtown Rockport, it's just.
Given what you just said, that, how that's moving forward, you know, I, I, I would agree with you. I don't, I don't think we're in any great danger, and you can, you can, if you decided at some point in the future you wanted to do this, you can, you always have that option.
Recreational personal consumption, January thirtieth, so just in, just under a week, or just at a week, basically, that, that takes place, that gets implemented, but for resale, there was nine months built into what we voted on, and in theory, there's gonna be another three months on top of that.
I'd say you're good.
Well, I mean, and I'm okay skipping over this, I will say, for the record, that unless the state rules are really, really strict about a lot of things with marijuana, I will not support marijuana businesses in Rockport, I just won't.
Yep, I, I really like the provision that if you suspect somebody being underage, you have to ask for their I D, but then you can't not sell it to them.
Yeah, well, that was one, that was, so basically, if I could give you just a super quick rundown, the language in the bill that we voted on, the citizens initiative, was quite poor. So what we've done, when it came to our committee last week, was fix the very glaring issues about those under the age of twenty-one, you only have to check their I D, but if they say fourteen, you, you could still sell it to them as long as you checked their I D.
Yeah, that's what I said.
We fixed that, um, and we, we spent a lot of time talking about public space, private space, um, smoking areas. So basically, where is an acceptable place for a private citizen to consume marijuana? You know, walking down the street, no. On their private property, yes. If they own three houses on all of those private properties, if their friend tells them it's okay on their private property, you can. So, we've talked a lot about the, the personal consumption, to try to make sure that once January thirtieth hits and you can use it for personal consumption, we've put some good safeguards in place there, then the joint select committee will work on refining, yeah, it's funny, isn't it? We had a lot of joint, joint select jokes. They're gonna be.
I missed that one.
Cool. They're going to be working on better defining things, better framing, and that's the time period that they have from January thirtieth, basically, in through to the beginning of twenty eighteen.
Okay. We do not have a motion on the floor.
None needed.
Can we talk a little bit more about the ordinance review committee? So, what, what I heard Jeff saying is that you'd like for this board to be clear about where the initiative lies, where it begins, and you want, you want it to be with the board. Fine. What does that mean with respect to instructions or requests that we make of the O R C? I'm looking for some downside to hearing from the O R C on this issue.
We would be setting their fall agenda sometime in July, probably the first of July, end of June.
We may have to do it earlier.
We might have to do it earlier, you know, however, we wanna do it, though. I'm thinking that what we would want, before we put this kind of an item on the O R C's agenda, is to hold an open meeting where we can solicit input, like we have for the library, get people to come in and tell us what they want, what they think that we shouldn't be doing, or should be doing, or how we should, or where it should be, or where it shouldn't be, and all of those things, so that we can formulate some kind of guidance to give to the O R C, so that they're not stumbling around. And then when it comes back to us sometime in late August, if it's gonna go on the November ballot, then we'll have that opportunity.
I have concerns, because I think this board tends to get itself into trouble by following which way the wind is blowing in the public, as opposed to making decisions and, and following our own convictions. Just bec- I mean, I can envision a scenario where the O R C would come back with such a compelling argument that these businesses should not be part of Rockport, that there's absolutely no reason to hold those conversations with the public. The five people would say, oh, I'm already convinced.
Ooh, boy, that, I, I think that's putting the cart before the horse. First of all, I think that if you query this board, you know, I for one am way closer to Ken than, than not. So, but this is not a kind of question that I'm willing to make in abstract, just based on my own experience. I mean, I have no experience with this stuff, so I have no way of knowing.
So I think that's what I meant, that's.
So I, I think it's a combination of.
Doesn't the O R C have valuable, you know, guidance here?
They have as, I'll put it this way, in the initial stages, they have as much guidance as anybody else in this town to come and stand there and tell us what they think.
They have as much right, they don't necessarily have as much relevant experience.
Well, I think what the O R C's role is gonna be is, is if we, if this board makes some decision about we either want or don't want marijuana businesses in Rockport, or we want very limited businesses in Rockport, or we want liberal use of the businesses in Rockport, then the O R C can take that information, and then they can go do what they're good at, which is looking at the land use ordinance and saying, okay, if you want it to be very, very limited, then we suggest this zone here, or this zone there. Or if you want it to be very liberal, we suggest this zone here, this zone here, but we don't, we think you should shy away from having it near the, whatever they might say.
Some sort of unqualified guidance is not helpful, is what, is, it's too open-ended, too.
I mean, I, if, I mean, basically, we, we would be asking for their personal opinions on the issue, I think, if we did that.
Yeah, and which, and, and, and there's no reason to elevate their particular personal opinions over anybody else in the town.
Not that any of them are shy about providing their personal opinions.
That's why they're on the O R C.
But I think that, I think that we have to frame the question for them, and then, and then let them do what they're expert at, which is look at the land ordinance and, and figure out.
And, and craft the wording, et cetera.
Yeah, and the wording and, and things like that. And it may be that this board comes down and decides, we don't wanna do it. We, we, you know, we, the board could make the decision, we don't want any marijuana businesses in Rockport. I don't know where the rest of the board stands on that, but it's certainly a possibility, in which case, then the O R C doesn't have to get involved.
Some of that will come from whatever the legislature and the rulemaking comes up with.
That's right, I mean, that's right.
If they say it can't be within ten thousand feet of a school, or within a church, or within, you know, this or that, you know, they could eliminate a lot of the town.
Well, that will, I mean, the rules that come down will, will affect my decision on how I feel about having businesses in Rockport, based on what the rules and the laws surrounding it are, that's, I've, you know, I've made that clear that, you know, for me, keeping it away from the kids is, is paramount. Including for me, I, I want really severe penalties for anybody procuring it for somebody underage. And if those aren't there, then I'm gonna say, forget it, I don't want it in Rockport. I, you know, I read articles, I'll go off on this, I read articles this week about somebody saying, well, this is some of the pro people in Maine saying, well, you know, if Maine delays it, then Massachusetts voted for it, they're gonna get all the marijuana tourism. I don't want marijuana tourism, I want people to come for Rockport for other things. I don't want people coming here for tourism, for that, sorry.
Okay, I'll, I'll take them, 'cause the scenery is that much cooler.
Okay. Does anybody wanna make a motion to adopt this?
Nope.
No.
No. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, one last thing, can we, um, I'm gonna be just a jerk on this little bit. Approve the notice regarding commercial or retail marijuana establishments and social club in the agenda. Can we just say, consider, or something like that, because when it's on the agenda as approve on something that I haven't even heard about, it puts us all in a particularly weird, weird place. It's just a wordy thing, but it's like.
I think you're right.
I didn't even catch that.
Should be discuss the possible notice, or consider, whatever, something like that. Yeah, it should, it shouldn't presuppose an outcome one way or the other.
Yeah.
I will try to keep that in mind in the future, when you see these things.
And when I read them, I'm gonna read.
I try to get these out in advance.
Maya culpa, you're right.
You're right.
Okay, we're moving on.
And, and that wasn't meant to be personal at all, that's, that's.
And now for the really controversial one.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. And as.
To ring or not to ring?
Well, actually, I, I had a query from a member of the press, asking, you know, well, actually, he was asking about the marijuana issue, and I responded to him and said, yeah, but that's not the most important, it's the next item. And so he wants to know all about it, whatever we decide, though, he's probably watching at home. He's with the, I think he's with the Camden Herald.
No, the last I saw, the only person watching was me.
He's already had his press.
Jennifer will put that tab in, like, at the bathroom or something.
When is the toboggan?
The toboggan is.
February eleventh?
Yes.
And twelfth, or we have to go both days?
No, all this is, is the challenge.
On the eleventh? On the eleventh?
Whatever Saturday is.
Yeah, the eleventh.
The eleventh.
Okay, which is not school break day. That, it's just the, against the two of us, the two teams. Now, I asked John and Leonard, John French, Leonard Lutter, a, a couple of questions today, and of course, I hadn't heard back from them, because I asked them very late in the day. But, uh, things like, you know, are we gonna get assistance getting the, the sled out to the snowball? But then, last year, if you recall, we all went out on the bus together, or pretty much all went on the bus together. Are we doing that again, sort of, you know, camaraderie type thing, and if so, what time? Last year, we were supposed to be the first card, or first race up on the card, and I think we were, but it wasn't one o'clock, it was closer to two o'clock, I think.
Yeah, they were just running behind.
Yeah, they were running way behind, um, but is that gonna happen again this year?
It always does, every year.
Yeah.
Well, this is only the second year.
That they're behind.
They're always behind in the afternoon. And then, I thought last year we had to sign some kind of waiver, but there also had to be an entry form. That last year, they took care of the entry form, and I understand that we are on the list of teams that are gonna be,
felt like we signed, didn't we sign that waiver when we went in and got our shirts at a tent? Didn't we have to sign something actually when we finally got to the mountain?
That may have been.
I think they had stuff.
We can do that ahead of time, so much the better.
And worst-case scenario about, if things don't materialize closer to the date, my friend still lives right across from the snowball. Worst-case scenario, I can stage you to his house the night before, before all the traffic shows up and everything.
Okay, uh, but some of the things that we need to decide tonight, what name are we gonna use?
I like.
Last year, we did sign sealed, capital letters, and delivered.
Still got the sweatshirt.
I do, too.
I do, too. And it still fits.
I still got the Andre hat, too.
I turned my Andre hat in.
Yeah.
We will rock you. We will rock you.
Ooh.
Damn.
Wow, that.
Seems we gotta get new sweatshirts.
Your seal just got.
I mean, seriously, I was with sign, sealed, delivered, but that's pretty good. It's pretty good.
My thing.
Ten points. Is there money in someone's slush fund to do up, we will rock you hoodies, or are we doing no more hoodies? Digging the hoodies.
You can make hoodies, it's not that hard.
Yeah, I couldn't afford hoodies for the amount of money they pay me to be here, so.
Just like get a hoodie, get some fabric paint and.
Write it on.
Get a marker.
Put big rocks on our heads?
We can turn our helmets.
You got rocks in it.
I'm not at all clear that I'm gonna be available for this.
That's the next one.
You're not being a team player here, Brendan.
If, if I have to get a babysitter to do this, I, I gotta tell you, it's not gonna be a high priority.
Tracy Murphy got up the mountain.
Bring the kids, bring the kids to see the.
Family fun event.
The cottage.
We'll see.
There's a beer tent.
Well, this is, this is a four-person event.
It's a four-person event, one has to sit out. Actually, it could be a six-person, we could have Rick included on that. And you know, Camden is, is suggesting that they just bring in anybody that they want, just so long as they work for the town. So if we want, you know, we could just put in a bunch of ringers to.
No, 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 it's not what we do.
Had the fastest time down the mountain last year.
Seriously, we were awesome.
We were, you held the record for a long time.
And this time, it may actually be down the chute.
That's a little more scary.
I know, that's gonna be awesome, I was, I'm really looking forward to it. So I'm on the, I'm on the sled, that's all I know, toboggan, whatever it is, and I'll wear whatever we have.
I'm willing to do it, unless somebody else wants to do it badly enough.
I literally have to make hoodies if that's a thing.
Rock on.
Yeah.
I will go along for the ride.
Brendan.
I would love to be left out.
I guess then I'm on, unless, Rick, you wanna, you wanna ride?
I mean, I'm glad to go, but I, you know, if you wanna go, I mean, I'm glad to go, but if you wanna go.
If it's for, maybe, maybe the bearded men should do it.
You'll be the emergency.
I'll be the emergency backup if you need it, I'll be there.
Actually, we could call it the Rock Beards.
We will rock beard you.
Okay.
All right, second.
Yep, now, remember last year, we had a quick get-together?
At the town office.
At the town office, just to practice how we wanted to get on, and who was in what order, and and some pictures taken. I wonder if one of the, our upcoming meetings, instead of, you know, we're gonna be here at seven, but do we wanna say, get here at six-thirty, so we can get that out of the way, and then go right into our meeting?
Sure.
I don't know which day we'd wanna do it, I don't, you know.
Have you arranged the toboggan, have you talked to-
Yeah, Tom keeps, Tom Cox keeps telling me, yep, he's getting one, he's got one for us, he's got one.
Okay, so I don't have to worry about that.
Yeah.
Rick, you're on ski helmets.
I got two.
Don't you have a bunch?
I have two of them, two of them, I don't know where the others came from.
I got, I got two of them.
Okay.
I don't know where the others came from.
I gave you yours back at the end of it.
Yep, yeah, I think Linda Clancy had one.
Although I'm thinking motorcycle helmet might be better.
Well, some of them were.
Ski ones.
Snowmobile helmets or something.
No, I'm gonna spray lighter fluid behind us.
Okay, okay.
Oh dear.
Well, the only meeting we have that we could do that for is next, is the library one on the thirtieth.
Well, we could do, why not, you know, we could do it the first, the seventh, or the ninth.
Let's do it, let's do it earlier, so if we're doing pictures, then like Linda can put it in the paper, and we look awesome.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, that's fine, I guess.
Okay, six-thirty? I'll have to get Tom to get me a-
Wait a second, which one, 'cause I've got a pathways meeting on the first.
The thirtieth.
The ninth is the one where I see it's on the red on the calendar.
Yeah, but take that off.
Toggin, oh, oh, we're doing it on the-
Well, so that we can get pictures in the ta, in the paper.
Okay, so we're doing it on the first?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Do we have anything else that we wanna talk about on the boggin' challenge? Nope, okay. Then let's move to wastewater.
Move to exit a select board and enter his wastewater?
Second.
Move and seconded, all in favor? And somewhere, we've lost our fifth member, but he'll be back.
I moved to commit the November twenty sixteen wastewater user debt fees totaling twenty-six thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-six cents to the treasurer for collection, can someone verify that number for me?
Just did, yep, good.
Thank you, Bill.
It's on all of them that way.
Second.
Move and seconded, discussion? Bearing none, all in favor?
I guess it's a four-zero vote. He's out of the room.
Move to exit his wastewater and re-enter his select board?
Second.
Move and seconded, all in favor? Liaison reports.
Can I go first?
Go right ahead.
Utterly mortified to report that I missed two meetings, and I have nothing meaningful to tell you.
That's 'cause you didn't go to the meetings.
I will do better.
It happens to all of us, don't worry about it.
Okay, Owen?
I am happy to report that the rec committee, even in the dead of winter, continues to meet, they asked me for some bylaw frameworks that I had been meaning to send to them, because of, we're over the March Jones thing, we have a good plan for going forward in the spring, so now what they're trying to do is utilize these winter months to kinda tie up some of the loose ends when they, you know, did everything so quickly. Pathways, I feel like I'm, you all probably have a better feel for what's happening with the joint Camden-Rockport MDOT pathway by Maritime Farms, because it was discussed during the select board meeting, the joint select board meeting. Primarily as it relates to Rockport, that was the, we're still trying to work on Camden's priorities for the master plan like we did for Rockport.
My understanding is that there was a pretty strong support at the meeting that we weren't at?
Yeah, we did it.
Camden's got a tougher row to hoe, just because the the physical numbers attached to it are more difficult than for ours, and we were also had the great forethought of setting up a reserve account for pathways, so we're already a couple legs up, they're gonna have the difficult conversation of where do we come up with that money. Have not yet met with the capital improvement committee, and the Legion is doing good. Please rent the Legion Hall, and I'll turn it over to someone else.
Before we go off of the capital improvement committee?
Yep.
Remember, we're looking at having a workshop to go through the whole process sometime in late April or May.
Oh, good.
Has the capital improvement committee been given the plan, the draft plan?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure they have it.
Well, I asked, I asked Megan to email it to Alan Mitchell, whether it got passed on to the other members of that committee, I don't know.
I'll just double check.
They should probably have a hard copy of it, too, like we do at the books.
Yeah, yeah. So, library committee met today, had a long discussion about what's coming up. Next Monday, they are, they worked their way through some numbers to suggest to us, and they're gonna come in on that. Basically, they they found a way to cut about one thousand feet out of the building that was proposed this year in November.
With programming implications, I presume?
Minimal, you know, it's, you know, okay, we can cut this to here, there are some, some that they just will not reduce, and it's like, you know, the fiction and nonfiction and children's area, and things like that, but they are gonna be recommending a one-story building.
Yep.
So that, 'cause that saves a lot of space, because of stairwells, and elevators, and extra washrooms, and extra circulation desks, and things like that.
We're still gonna be smart about it, though, and leave blank spaces to build stairs.
That's, that's what we get into discussion when we get into the architects.
The architect's decision.
Yes, and how to do that. One thing they reported, and I didn't get it written down, usage at the new facility is up inconsistently. October to October, comparing last October, well, this past October, and the previous October, past November, the previous November, they are showing significant increases in virtually all of the categories that are being tracked. December shows the same thing, but we have to remember that the library effectively was closed for like two weeks last December, even though they got a lot of people coming in those last two weeks when they were open.
By same thing, you mean, it it shows the same numbers?
It shows us, it says a similar type of an increase over the previous year, though much larger.
Deflated numbers last year.
So, you know, when you see those numbers, that, yes, they're valid for what we had then, and what we had this December, but you really can't do a year-to-year comparison.
Well, last year's December was just totally-
Yeah, it was, exactly, yeah. And, oh, and Ann Philly strongly recommended that when we have that meeting with Jane LaFleur and the planners, that we do have our planner there. When we were discussing last week, there was an indication made that there may be considered, you know, people may take anything that Jamie says as biased, because he's a town employee, and this and this, and, you know, but we we really need to hear from him.
Yeah, we we have to make clear that there's a difference between personal bias and professional information.
Yes, yes, and that's the way they addressed it.
You know, I also, I I don't know if if I made this point at all last week, I wanna I want to make sure that people understand that, like, we're grownups, and we can hear people's opinions without having them automatically sway us, it's not a it's not a matter of who spoke loudest and most recently.
Yeah. Moving on, the friends of the Rockport Public Library are losing their book sorting space, effectively after the book sale in July.
This coming, this coming July.
This coming July, the Glovers, who have been letting them use it for only the cost of heating and electricity, need to take it over to expand their business, that's Rockport Steel. Very glad that they were able to provide that for two and a half years, well, actually, by July, it'll be almost three years. So, you know, it was good, but we need to find, or help, we need to start thinking of what we can help them find. You know, yes, it's a private organization, they do a lot for the library, and, you know, if they're accommodated well, they can continue that, that great work. Midco Solid Waste, you didn't mention this, I'm surprised, you had the opportunity.
I signed all the warrants on time for Midco Solid Waste Corporation.
The next meeting is this Wednesday, seven, I have five, seven P.M., in the Camden Town Office, they're gonna be meeting there the fourth Wednesdays of the month, either for a board meeting or for a workshop, all the way through into July, when is where the annual meeting is.
So they're staying in the same place all the time?
They're staying as where they have been, and on the the same night that they had been in the past. One of the things they're starting to look at now is redesign of the facility. It's, well, as you know, it 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 just sort of oozed its way into the configuration it is.
It's not an appropriate choice of words.
Well, it it didn't, it didn't start with a plan to be the way it is. By taking on other things and adding to it, it developed the way it is, which is pretty much without a good plan. Yeah, so, looking at trying to figure out, and, you know, it's gonna come down to a matter of money, you know, can can the four towns afford to re, to change it around, or is it just, you know, yeah, we can spend spend money and make it more efficient, but is it gonna save us the money that it costs us to spend? So that starts this Wednesday.
And does that decision, considering the sometimes wide gulf between what that Midco Solid Waste and feels, and the people who actually populate the towns, is, how is that decision gonna be made, that that presentation, and that must go to vote, because it's gonna be a budget matter, or is that money that the Midco Solid Waste is going to say, we're gonna spend that money and up the-
That's, that's one of those tricky things, if we go to take out a loan over three years, I think that would be considered a contract, a loan, if it's over three years-
Then contract goes to the-
And has to go to the voters, for all the towns to approve. They just completed that, what they call the gut project.
Right.
We're physically separating the two parts of the quarries, and that-
Update success?
Oh, very much.
And under budget?
And under budget.
Like a lot under budget.
The water is raising, rising quite quickly in the north quarry, the one up by, the adjacent to Union Street. Not sure when it will start to overflow, not immediately, of course, but they, Jim Guerra said, you could notice it the first week, it was up at least a foot, because they, when they finished the project, they just painted a white line, and after a week, you couldn't see the white line anymore, because it was well below water.
Venice, nineteen seventy-five.
Yeah, yes, exactly, so it is, it is obviously stopping the inflow from there. Because most of the quarry, most of the landfill now is really sort of open, it's still getting a lot, we've had a lot of rain lately, and so the pumping rate is still up, but when it's-
On the, on the, on the other side?
On on the side where the landfill is, where we're putting in the dump. So, we're not pumping as much, from what I understand from Jim, he's gonna give us that update on Wednesday. We are still pumping, but that's due to the the rain that we have had. If it had been a cold winter, and we were getting a lot of snow, we'd be pumping a lot less.
So I would just urge our representatives to that board to be vigilant in learning from previous experience.
Oh, which, let me fin, I gotta finish my, my thought, the cost of that, because it was determined that that was really part of a closure, we were gonna have to do it eventually.
Came out of-
They took the money out of the closure reserve with the intent of repaying it by the reduced amount of money that we've gotta spend to pump the leachate out to Camden.
And the last thing on this is, even though we may not have all the funds necessary with the perk rebate when we separate from the MRC, some of this redesign, or a good portion of it, could be if all four towns choose to basically not even get the perk check and give it straight to the Solid Waste Corporation, and if we all four towns consolidate it, we would have a sizable amount of money to do that redesign, and hopefully, even though Jim was kinda making it sound as, we would have to take a bond out at some point, but that was also thinking that we were gonna try to put that, that gut project money back into the closure fund.
Yeah, then that's what we're working on.
But there's money, in theory, coming from perk in twenty eighteen.
Yeah, you know, again, but there, each town would have to agree to put their portion back in, because those checks are coming to the towns, not the MRC, or Midco Solid Waste.
Right.
So, and the investment committee will be presenting to us next month. That's mine.
ORC has been meeting, tackling the hotel issue, that's pretty well ready, I think. Dealing also with definitions of construction and landscaping businesses, there are some businesses in town that wanna expand someplace where it's currently not permitted, we're looking at ways to see if that's appropriate or not. Defining storage and mini-storage, right now, we say mini-storage is prohibited, but we don't say what it is, and so we're working on that one.
It's bad art. Where do we, where where does the hotel thing stand, or you, can you do that consistently?
Right now, the the idea is gonna be that hotels will be suggested to be in allowed use in the downtown district, and, you know, in the central street area, but that there will be a maximum of forty rooms permitted in the aggregate for the zone, which basically allows the use to to get in there, but doesn't allow the entire zone to be overwhelmed with hotels, so there's nothing else, the feeling being that we, what we really want in the downtown area is a vibrant village district, and the committee feels that a hotel could certainly be part of that, but if the whole thing is hotels, then you lose the the diversity. So that's where that stands right now. And that's about it for ORC. Cemetery, you heard from tonight, progress being made there, I feel like the committee is now on a path to really sort of look hard at this columbarium issue, and maybe get some real numbers, and and start to move forward with that proposal, so that's good news there. Ambulance review has not met, although I would suggest it probably needs to soon, I saw a news item where they have a new division commander now in Rockport, so I think we probably oughta set a meeting up for that fairly soon. When we met the last time, we did decide that we need to meet more frequently than we have been. And that's it for me, I think.
Before you start-
Yes.
Rick, I just realized, we do not have the wastewater commitment papers in here to sign. I took it out of my packet, and we're passing it around to sign.
Oh, okay.
That's why it's gonna come looking a little differently.
I thought, I, is that the one, is that it there?
That's the quick claim deed.
Oh, that's the quick claim deed, okay.
And there's two copies of that, so, sorry, Jeff.
No, that's right. Zoning board, planning board, zoning board, I'm not, I don't think they've had a meeting for a while, I have, I missed the last planning board meeting. The planning board has a workshop on Wednesday of this week. Rockport Opera House met on the thirteenth, and it is the year, we've determined that it is more or less the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of the building of this building, of the completion of this building. And so there was quite a bit of talk about what we could do to celebrate that, it ran from commissioning an opera, because it is an opera house. That was my answer. And so there there may be some, the committee is working on partnering with some of the usual suspects to see what we can do to have a not not a week-long, but a, you know, a day-long celebration of the of the opera house, so they're birthing a subcommittee for that. Talking about library involvement with historical images, it's been really actually quite good to have a member of the library, it hasn't been Ben, but it's been Keith.
Keith.
Keith, yes, to be there, 'cause 'cause they can build on ideas and what have you, so that's good. The chairman of the board has has a thing in for exterior lighting, so he's gonna try and see whether he can have that come to fruition in time for a celebration. The building itself was completed in March or, or March, April of eighteen ninety-two, but we're not gonna look at it exactly, you know, that day, it's gonna be sometime this summer. Conversation at the Rock, at the Opera House Committee once again went to the HVAC, little update of that, we got engineering firm from Connecticut who installed the system twenty years ago, so they had all the papers and everything, which were somewhat accurate, all the blueprints. The air conditioning life at that point was, you know, said to be fifteen years, we're now pushing- The air conditioning life at that point was, you know, said to be 15 years. We're now pushing over 20. No, I'm sorry, we're now approaching 25. How could they have installed it 20 years ago? So they must have installed it 25 years ago. The codes are different also, so there's a lot of different stuff. Exterior intake is next to the outflow and stuff like that. So their recommendation, of course, is to replace the entire system. That is, everyone's sitting down, a mere $100,000 to $150,000. Now, one of the things that would ameliorate that somewhat is if the duct work could, is in sufficient condition to stay. But each of the seams and everything needs to be checked and sealed, and that's a lot of digging around in very small spaces.
We just insulated all that, too.
Well, we insulated the envelope itself, but, and some of that, some of that affects the duct work. Most of the duct work stands above or below.
Yeah.
Is this a historic building, and if it is, can you apply for grants that you couldn't for like, say, the town office?
That is a great question. I don't know the answer to that.
I don't either.
Yeah, well, we will find that. There's no plaque on the outside that says it's hysterical.
Well, we do have a plaque for a cemetery.
But we could, we could do one up and do it ourselves, yeah. No, that's a, that's a great question. We will, we'll bring that up to the next meeting.
125, you said?
Uh, 1 to 150.
Threshold. 1 to 150.
But the, but 50 of that is fully the duct work, so we could knock it, we can keep it around 100-ish.
And the capital improvement plan?
Knows about it.
Knows about it.
Yeah. And so-
That is just the air conditioning component. It's not the furnace?
Not the furnace.
Not the furnace.
Furnace is separate.
Yeah. And so we're also using, so there are intermediate steps. The big problem is the jeopardy that the compressor could go any time. That's, you know, you're just looking at catastrophic failure, and then everyone's not happy. Last summer specifically, no complaints about it being too hot, just complaints about it being too cold in the summertime. So that means the work that they did so far is, is working out. So there was discussion about, about the CIP, and there we are. So that's the Opera House. And that's it.
Okay. Nothing further?